Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
Okay, we're going to call the meeting of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners for December 13th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Greatop.
Here.
Commissioner London.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Sumasko.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Chairman Bohm.
Here.
Item number three additions, deletions, changes to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have a few here. I'll try to go through it slow, but in the additions, we have Blue Water Convention Visitors' Bureau Update, unfinished business, that will be item now in the agenda, 10A. Resolution 1247 of Amendments to the Retirement Ordinance, that will become A, item S, as in SAM. BLC Meeting Schedule, item A will become item AT. Automation Lease Extension will be AU. Can we do this, the deletions all in one motion?
And then the deletion of them.
And the deletion will be the Marine City Coordination Agreement Renewal.
Do I have a-
Will be item 11AN. So I would move that in motion, Mr. Chairman.
Report. Do I have a second on it?
Yep, got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
One second.
I support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number five, minutes of previous meetings, items A through C.
Chairman, I would move the minutes of the November 8th, 2012 Commission Meeting and November 29th, 2012 Special Meeting and the December 6th, 2012 Standing Committee Meetings to be approved and filed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, proclamations. Item number A, recognizing 25 years of service for C. Stroh. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the proclamation recognizing Kathy Stroh for 25 years of service.
Second. One second, and we'll have somebody that'll get it to that individual at the appropriate time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number B, proclamation in recognition.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the proclamation recognizing Tim Ward as a 2012 Ironman Florida Triathlon competitor.
Second.
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 Who seconded that motion, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Sumasko.
Mr. Greatop, would you like to have Mr. Ward up there with you?
All in favor?
I thought maybe this had slipped under the radar.
No?
I don't think so.
All in favor?
This is a pretty important milestone in your life. Mine too, because I don't know anybody else that's ever been able to do something, so whatever you call it, the description. Anyway, this is a proclamation in recognition of Timothy Ward, 2012 Ironman Florida Triathlon competitor. Whereas Timothy Ward, a St. Clair County Commissioner, participated in and completed the 2012 Ironman Florida Triathlon on Saturday, November 3rd, 2012. And whereas the Ironman Triathlon began on November 1999 and takes place in Panama City, Florida, and whereas Ironman Florida athletes start with a 2.4 mile swim amongst the sharks, no, I'm sorry, that takes place in the waters of the Gulf of Mexico, including a mid-swim exit of the water for a short beach run in between laps. I thought I was going to say something else. And whereas, after exiting the water, Ironman Florida athletes are challenged by a 112-mile bicycle course, and whereas, Ironman Florida athletes then run 26.2 miles through local neighborhoods, and whereas Timothy Ward completed the 2012 Ironman Florida Triathlon with a swim time of 1 hour 30 minutes and 4 seconds, a bike time of 6 hours 47 minutes 46 seconds, and a run time of 4 hours 16 minutes 32 seconds, resulting in an overall time of 12 hours 51 minutes 41 seconds. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of its citizens, hereby adopts this proclamation and extends our congratulations to Tim Ward for his dedication and determination in his accomplishments. Proclaimed this sixth day of December 2012, Jeffrey L. Bohm, chairperson, Stephen Sumasko, Bill Greatop, Howard Hydeman, Terry London, and Dave Rushing, chairman. Congratulations, Mr. Ward. Say a few words.
Thanks, guys. I'm tired of just reading.
Item number seven on the consent agenda, items A through S.
Chairman, I'm tired already, Mr. Chairman. I would move item 7A through item S to be approved and filed on the consent agenda.
Support. Any discussion on any of them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item number eight, reports to standing committees. I'm going to start down there with you, Mr. Greatop.
I would like to report that, and it's a sad thing to report, but there was a fire in Clay Township two days ago, and one woman perished and one woman was rescued. But I do want to mention that Ed Silver, who was a sergeant in Elginak and is now a St. Clair County deputy, along with his partner, did break out a window with the help of other people, did rescue the one woman who survived. She's in serious condition, but they expect she will survive. And I just want to offer congratulations to those men and to the department for what they did down there. I thought it was tremendous. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Rushing?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Sumasko?
What?
Report.
I didn't have my red packet. I didn't have a thing.
Standing committee.
Standing committee report. I'm good to go, yeah, thanks.
Mr. Ward?
No report here. No report here.
I'm going to take a pass, too. Item number nine, any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Any citizen sings? None? We're going to move on.
I'm going to actually take my three minutes if I could.
Yeah, go up there.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Get the clock out, Howard.
You've got to be kidding.
I got you. Three minutes. All right.
Howard, could you take him out of there if you-
First of all, I would like to thank you for recognizing me for my triathlon finishing. That's nice of you guys. That wasn't going to be part of my speech. But I did want to take this three minutes to sincerely thank the board and commissioners. I just kind of wanted to go around. Bill, you know, you had the task of bringing your schoolteacher credentials back, trying to keep me in line down there. I appreciate that. Dave, what can I really say? Riley Township's lucky to have you here. Terry, I see you diligently taking notes. You know, you've put a lot of time in public service. You know, you've done the best job you could, be it as it may, and the county appreciates all your help. Jeff, you know, you were, no kidding aside here, you were the guy that advocated for me to be here. I appreciate that. Hopefully, I've contributed to the board and didn't let you down for the faith you gave in me to get me here. So I appreciate that. Howard, we had a little trouble when we first got started. You were a little confused on the vote, but I'd like to think that-
To a point or not to a point?
Things flied pretty straight after that, so I appreciated that. Steve, you know, he's had to put up with me turning my normally verbal comments into written comments, so I've been writing him notes over the years and the wisecracks that I normally would have shared in a public forum and a private forum, and I appreciated that outlet and the relationship that we've got.
We'll continue.
Okay.
Can I get three minutes rebuttal? Or is there-
And then finally, just to wrap it up, I'd like to formally thank Mr. Kaufman and his staff. You know, you guys have answered a lot of questions, been patient with me in educating me further on government. And, you know, just to conclude, I've got to tell you that I, this experience has shown, taught me that, you know, how what a good ship the county runs, and the county's lucky to have the number of dedicated employees they have, and I thank you for that.
Thanks for your service, Tim. Seriously, I was fortunate to have you on this board, and it's a good asset.
It's a too late to change my vote. He'll never live that long.
A motion to reconsider or something.
You know, I'm serious, Jeff. I would like to thank Tim for his service. You've been very instrumental in a lot of complicated issues, and I really appreciate your presence on the board, and it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess while we're talking, Terry, you too, I was on the board. Previous, first, great story, first four new commissioners on the board. Terry and we go out to the room, and Terry's like, hey, where do we go for a caucus act? Because Terry came on the state legislature, I go, I don't know the men's bathroom. He was on the board, and then he came back and talked to Terry all the time about issues, and he definitely puts the effort and time in and everything else, and could be missed.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the unfinished business portion. The Convention and Visitors Bureau, we put it under Convention and Visitors Bureau Update, and Bill and I, I think, are going to tag team this a little bit. But we're at the point where the convention center, we really need to hone in on the floor plan. Then, once we get the floor plan piece of it figured out, then we need to start to talk about the design phase of it. I know we had the little deal at the Thomas Edison Inn, and we rolled out just some renderings of some stuff. I was really pushing Bill to get something out, and I probably made a mistake on doing that because we weren't really there yet. Like I said, the floor plan piece of it is the piece that we as a board need to sign off on so they can start having the discussions on what the building's going to look like. Now, I want to keep in mind, when we talk about floor plan, the team that we did assemble, Progressive Architects, Bill Kruger, Dave Grisel, along with, you know, five or six of them probably really sitting down, hashing through this thing, certain space requirements needed, so on and so forth. So at this time, I would like the board, I guess, to, I'm going to have Bill interject a little bit, but we need to say, yes, we would like to go ahead with this floor plan, make sure Kruger, Grisel, those guys sign off on it, then we can start the next piece of it. Because anything that you've seen today in any building type of thing, everything's still on the table as far as that piece of it goes. We haven't got there yet, so you look at a lot of the renderings, but that's the first thing that we need to pin down. You want to speak on that a little bit, Bill?
Sure. I just want, I'd like to reiterate a couple of things that Jeff mentioned, as well as provide some additional clarity on the schematic design package, which is the point the county is at with this right now. It's been sent to us from Progressive A&amp;E really to address three things. They're needing a sign off from all of the design professionals, including yourself, a thumbs up, a thumbs down. We're really looking at the volume of the space, and based on that, what Progressive A&amp;E will do, as well as Orion, is they will use that volume as a way of entering into the design phase and producing more accurate cost estimates for this particular project. You know, up until now, we've had a general idea of how big everything needs to be, how many walls we need to put up, things like that, the space needs. Well, now, this will be firmed up. Obviously, it's not set in stone, and there will be allowances for changes as we move along through the design phase, but it'll at least enable the architects and the construction manager to start honing in on the cost estimates. The schematic design package is being reviewed by Dave Grisel and by Bill Kruger. You've met both of them. Initially, their initial reaction is very positive. They have been involved in getting us to this point. In fact, at some of the early meetings that we had where we were kicking around various versions of the floor plans, we thought we had some pretty good ideas, and then we would get those two gentlemen on the phone to look at them, and they'd say, nope, fellas, you missed it. You need to do this, you need to do that. So everyone's been working very diligently to follow the advice that we've been given by those two gentlemen. They seem to be happy at this point, but if the board chooses to act on this tonight, I would certainly suggest that it be subject to getting favorable reviews, written reviews from both Mr. Kruger and Mr. Grisel, which they've indicated they will provide. I'm not sure how much detail you want us to get into at this point. As Commissioner Bohm pointed out, some of the drawings that were revealed a couple of weeks ago, those were nothing more than providing the design team with an opportunity to look at some of the possibilities and start kicking around some of the potential cost estimates. You know, one of the big costs of this is going to be the exterior of that building, the structure itself that holds everything up. And we need to get an idea of how much money we're willing to pay for that, and that's going to depend quite a bit on what we want to do for a design, how we want it to look. And there's a full range that we can choose from. So that's really all that those four images were designed to do, and certainly those are not on the table today for review and comment either. An issue that has come up quite a bit has been the windows, whether or not we have enough glass. And I think if you looked at the schematic design package that you received last week, that information and that view that was provided from the east, from the river, illustrates that there is a very significant amount of glass available, and there will be plenty of views available for the river as well as the lake. Unfortunately, that kind of information was not available when we had the event up at the Edison Inn a few weeks ago. That may have detailed some of the comments that we had been receiving. So certainly, if you have any other questions on what we're doing at the schematic design package phase and what you see there on the board across the room, I'd be more than happy to try and answer any of those questions.
Howard?
Just one question, just for clarification. We're still targeting the 45,000 square feet of floor space that we will own?
Yes, we are. Yes. Now, so far, we have a preliminary agreement as well with the hotel developer, the abbey that exists in the Edison Inn. The abbey will remain. Obviously, it'll look a little bit different, but the abbey will remain, and currently the plans are to enable that to be split up into additional conference rooms. So what we see there is an awful lot of meeting space. We also have the ability to use that abbey space as three additional breakout rooms. Obviously, it's owned by the hotel, not by us, but that provides opportunities for additional space, something that Mr. Kruger really thought was important when he realized we could add that to the overall capacity for meetings.
Now, a question about, they use the word volume. That's three dimensional, that.
Correct.
Are they including the height of the ceilings and everything in that at this point, or is that a separate entity?
As they exist and as they were explained in this document, yes, they are including that. But obviously, as we start moving forward, if we decide that we've got a little bit of money available because we've decided to make a change over here, and we want to raise the ceiling, we'll be able to do that. However, keep in mind that raising the ceiling in the big exhibit hall may not be possible because of the expense for the exterior supports, but you might be looking at raising the ceiling heights, for instance, in that pre-function area, which is almost like a freestanding facility.
Chair. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Bill, I know, I remember at the event, we had the voting that people were going to give us. I want to just touch on that for a little bit, but the outside was the only comment. I mean, everything I thought was really, I mean, the budget amount, the part that we were going to own, the review and the experts that we have working on this. I was all very excited about all of that, but the actual outside, I don't know, you call it the sod? I mean, there was a comment in the paper, in the Times Herald-
Truthfully, we jumped the gun on that, Terry. I was really pressing Bill to get something out for the meeting.
I know, but I just was-
Probably shouldn't, literally, because we didn't even have that, and what we presented on it was the look of some brick choices, basically, I guess, for better lack of choice of words, and it wasn't the whole overall design and stuff. And it was, I, you know, personally wasn't enthused about it because it was, carried out in front of the horse, I guess, so to speak. The, getting back to the floor plan piece of it, we picked the floor plan, then we, then the whole rest of it comes together. That's, you know, step two. And like I said, for us, as I guess as Board of Commissioners, I mean, we've got five different architects sitting in a room, a couple of experts in it, so on and so forth.
David?
Yeah, just with same comment. I'm not sure I agree with having it come out too early, having it come out. We're getting a lot of feedback, but that will help us make a better decision. So potentially, if you saw one of those was ugly, it might actually-
I think if you saw the whole, the whole overall renderings of the whole design of the whole building, and we're privy to some sketches perhaps to look at different things, but just to lay it out, to what we put out, just say, this is our convention center, and so, block wall.
Better to get out early than late, and then make changes.
Tim?
I know, Bill, I shared with you that my concern of the layout was just, did we allocate enough space for restrooms? I bring it up again. To me, it was always an issue with the Edison Inn, they only had that one restroom kind of through that hallway. Make sure that we have adequate facilities. I just, I don't know, I'm assuming you brought that to the architect's attention?
Yes, I have, and actually, the restrooms, the facilities have changed a number of times over probably the last three or four months. So I expect them to change more. And you commented, have we sent your comments along? Commissioner Rushing indicated that it was good to roll those out because we'd receive a lot of comments. We received 33 pages worth of comments so far.
Great.
All of them have been shared with the, with the design team, and they're going through those, and they're pulling out some good ideas. But yes, yours have been passed along as well.
Great, thank you. Steve?
I guess I'm surprised that we would be taking action on something like this in any direction tonight. What I've received in emails was so hard to see, I guess I assumed we'd be, this would be worthy of some workshops or three-on-threes or something to kind of-
I don't necessarily know, I mean, at this direction. I guess what I'd like to do is send that floor plan over to Kruger and Grisel and have them put their stamp on it, then bring it back to us, I guess, then make an action.
I mean, I trust Kruger and Grisel. I mean, I'm not, my bigger concern is to design this from the inside out. From what I've tried to do to study to the best I can what we need to do to make this a successful facility, we have a certain amount of dollars to build it, and we're talking about a floor plan, and we're talking about the outside walls and the expensive versus the nature of the cost on the exterior and all that. What seems to be most important for conference centers and convention centers are things like, you know, ambient sound levels in the building, technology infrastructure, things like chair design, lighting controls, being able to control the various areas. I mean, I just want to get a sense that we're not, we're going to spend money on what's going to make that marketable and not so much on what's going to make it, you know-
Yeah, but there's certain industry standards. I think when you talk to these guys, you need X amount of breakout rooms, you need X amount of space, you need any and so-
Where I'm at today, I guess, I have not seen enough, I don't know, I've not seen enough on it. Is it my fault that I haven't plugged into something that's going on? I don't know. I've seen, I was talking to Bill today, I said, now, this orientation, where is the main entrance to the Thomas Edison Inn from just the documents we have on the board? I just don't think we should take action on it tonight to rubber stamp some floor plan when-
I guess as commissioners, and we entrust or hire these individuals that are quote-unquote "experts" in it to design these things and bring it back to us, the last thing I can imagine is seven commissioners sitting there arguing over, you know, how come this room isn't this size?
Is that what you're, is that what we're saying? Is that we got a letter from Kruger saying that's the design you want?
Well, they've been involved in the process. I think if we, and however you guys want to handle it, I mean, that's why I'm putting it out. I mean, in my mind is, perhaps this is the floor plan, send it back to Kruger and Grisel. If they come back with some other changes, they're, again, they're the ones that designed this and put it together and brought it to us.
See, but I guess my question, Jeff, is, you know, as far as a floor plan, yeah, that's a great floor plan. Do they realize if we build the floor plan, you know, are we going to have the proper fittings for that building? Do we have to do something different with the floor plan to fit it out properly? I don't have a good sense of that. See, what we have for our resolution 11-47 or whatever it was is, it's a $9 million facility to our satisfaction. I didn't, I didn't like that because it didn't tell me anything, you know? I like the fact it's our satisfaction, we have control on it. So now, it's like, okay, what do I want in this box we're building? You know, we want the layout, but are we going to sacrifice layout against the things you might need to make it marketable for connections for internet high speed, flat-screen TVs versus roll-down screens? I don't see any of that happening.
That's kind of, I think that would- In my mind, that would be a finished product type of thing, you know, that is probably the step three or four, but where-
But that's the questions I have now. If that's the case, that's great, and is it within our $9 million target? Because we're all very sensitive to hitting this thing at or below target.
Yeah, but you can talk.
And to have it done the way we need to have it done.
Well, and if I could add a couple of comments, what you're saying is exactly the stage we're at right now. The architects are using that floor plan and industry standards to build a state-of-the-art facility, addressing those issues that you've mentioned. They know what a standard square footage cost is. So what they need us to do is say, okay, this is the square footage we have agreed to. Because based on the budget that's available, they say this square footage can provide us with the type of facility that Mr. Kruger and Mr. Grisel feels we need to build to hit our planned market, to have a successful facility.
Do we have anything binding to say what we're going to have in this facility?
No, that's actually the next phase. Really, what they want to do right now is confirm, this is the size, and based on those industry standards, it can meet the $9 million. So part of this is them coming to us and saying, St. Clair County, based on this design, we feel we can hit $9 million for this overall project. If we agree and we accept that, then the next phase is going to be the actual design phase where we start talking about those items you mentioned, the AV, the lighting systems, the finishes.
To use an example, the Atchison presentation with the IACC guidelines that I've looked at, that's really, that's what, I guess I'm looking for, is how do we nail this down? Maybe not those guidelines, but what, that kind of specificity. Okay, we can do this floor plan, I hate to say we're going to do this floor plan and find it well, but if you do that, then we can't do what we need to do over here.
Sure.
And I just want to have a sense of that. I don't know if I'm not plugged in right, or if I'm not seeing-
No, we're actually, and that type of information hasn't been discussed at all because the architects are telling us, we don't even start talking about those design elements until we know for sure that we can hit the budget and we can hit the market that we're shooting for.
In any floor plan that Kruger says, the CSL says is a good floor plan, I'm not going to second guess that, I don't want to, and it's nonsense, I'm not, that's not where I'm going with this. And if all we're doing is saying, that's CSL's recommendation, is it okay? That's okay. I don't, that's okay. The initial booklet you handed out in October with all these floor plans and what Orion and those people gave out seemed to place our convention facility, seemed like the front was more wrapped around the river, which was, I was a little concerned about that, because to me, that's what's going to be, that's what you want to see, is the river and the freighters, you know, make sure we get enough of that river view and this will go to the restaurant and the hotel. And I didn't have really a sense of that from the drawing. So if that floor plan can be, you know, I just, I don't want to tell you except that I don't, if it's recommended, that's fine. If all you're looking to do, we, we'll just give them authority to recommend and keep looking at it, but I don't want to get locked into something and find out until, because I'm real concerned about what is going to be in that facility to market it.
Right.
And so if all we're doing is looking at floor plan, it's, yeah, it's a floor plan.
Well, and what I would like to suggest that we do is shortly after the first of the year, bring the design team in and spend some time with the board to begin talking about, here's what's going to happen during the design phase. We're going to talk about this, this, and this. They'll be able to address many of the issues that you bring up, Commissioner Sumasko. They can even talk about, how did we get at this stage? Why did we move, you know, cock the convention center- how did we get at this stage, why did we move, you know, cock the convention center as we did and put it on an angle instead of straight, and why did we shift it a little further west than we originally looked at? They can certainly provide you with that kind of detail, why those things were done, as well as, here's what we're going to be looking at over the next three or four months.
About the time that Mr. Wheeler wanted to do a closing on the building, he came to our meetings, and one of the questions I had directly to him, sitting right down here, was, are we, you know, this, this square footage times cost equals the nine million, is that just the box? And he said, you know, that was just the building. I'm thinking, okay, where do we get everything else that's going to fit into this? And, and they got a lot to work with, nine million's a lot of money, you know, and make sure we get that, if we have to sacrifice the exterior for interiors, I always want to make sure we don't go down some road or something, and, so, so what are you looking for tonight, Jeff?
I'm looking for, I guess we have to say, is this the floor plan that we would like to send back to Kruger? I mean, we have to have a starting point somewhere.
And it's always subject to modification, or we're just going to send it over and?
Yeah, because not, I mean, somewhere along line in the design phase, you got, you got to have the floor plan to start with the design.
This is what CSL had recommended, he reviewed it, said this is a, this is a fine.
Him, Greisel, the whole team of everybody that we've got are the guys that have put this together. This isn't yours truly sitting in a room saying, I don't like this.
Do those recommendations come in writing, or are they just phone calls, or what is it? I mean, are we getting a letter from them saying we recommend this?
You'll be getting, um, emails or formal letters, I haven't clarified whether, chances are there are going to be emails that will come to me.
I mean, I've seen you've sent some stuff out in email, and I look at it, and I've got a big screen on my desk, but I still couldn't really see what it was, this was a batter, but whatever these experts we retained are going to do, it's going to be formal. It's going to say, so this is a formal, this is what they've done, this is, you're looking for some action tonight on?
Oh, Bill, I, I still have two points that I'll, the one, the one I want to say congratulations on the continually nine million dollar, that's, that's, that's the bottom line, that's, that's the total cost, and that's going to stay, and you've reiterated that many times, but I just want to say, that's, we're still, we're still looking at, that's the amount of money. The second thing, which I mentioned on my beginning question, was on the voting, how did that turn, what did, did you get anything from the public on the voting, uh, the day that we had our event?
Thirty-three pages of comments, correct?
Well, yeah, yes, we did receive a lot of comments, many written on the ballot, many sent in afterwards via email. The ballots themselves overwhelmingly, the design number four, um, is what folks favored the most. And if you remember what that had, that had kind of a stone facade along the bottom. Yes, the, what appeared to be pillars, um, going up vertically with a cap along the top. But again, that is just an idea that's been thrown out there for, um, cost estimating at this point. Is that the design we're going to end up with? Couldn't tell you, couldn't tell you.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome.
Do we need a motion at this time, Mr. Chair?
Um, I guess I'd like to see what the flavor of the board is, if this is, I think the process that we go to is, okay, we're fine with the floor plan, kick it back to Greisel, Kruger, those guys, make sure they sign up, I'm sure they will, they designed it thing.
I like it if Mr. Ward would make the motion, I would second it.
If you get a chance to second, Mr.?
Oh, I would, I would concede to Mr. London.
So the process is that we're going to take this design, we're sending it back to CSL, Bill Kruger, they're going to give us something in writing, basically indicating their, uh, support of this design.
Correct. And, and then we will begin entering the design.
But they were part of that process, you know, so I mean, it's not, it's not that this is something that was done, the architects, Kruger's never seen it, Greisel's never seen it, they were all part of the putting it together, these guys have been working for.
The starting point of the design, that's where we're at, right?
Correct. There's going to be during, as this project moves forward, there are, um, in our agreement with the construction manager and with the architect, the board has certain steps that they need to make, uh, take. There are certain phases where the board's going to be asked, give us a thumbs up, tell us this is acceptable or not acceptable, because we're not going to go any further and make any further commitments on this particular design or this type of material until the board says yes.
To an initial, an initial design recommendation, and that's all it is?
Correct, and there will be other stages where we'll come back to you, and you'll be asked many of the same kind of questions.
I'd make a motion to, uh, accept the initial design concept or recommendation to be forwarded on for final revisions by our consultants.
Mr. Chairman, I'd support that motion.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Moving on, item number eleven A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the county, St. Clair County's disbursements for the month of October 2012 in the amount of fifty-three million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents, Mr. Chairman.
Support, discussion, uh, roll call.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item number B, approval of the county disbursements.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the county of St. Clair's disbursements for the month of November 2012 in the amount of thirty-five million, one hundred and one thousand, six hundred and, six hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-two cents.
Support, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item number C, the two thousand ten inter-local agreement between Macomb and St. Clair Counties for the Homeland Security Grant Program.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the twenty-ten inter-local agreement with Macomb County for Homeland Security Grant Program in the amount of six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, uh, twelve dollars and forty-three cents.
I have a second on that. Support, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes, item number D, the two thousand eleven inter-local agreement between Macomb and St. Clair Counties.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the twenty-twelve inter-local agreement with Macomb County for Homeland, Homeland Security Grant Program in the amount of five hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars.
Support, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item number E, the two thousand twelve inter-local agreement between Macomb and St. Clair Counties for the Homeland Security Grant Program.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the twenty-twelve inter-local agreement with Macomb County for Homeland Security Grant Program in the amount of three hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Support, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item number F, the two thousand thirteen pension and retiree healthcare contribution rates.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to set the two thousand thirteen pension contribution amounts as follows. The county of St. Clair, five million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. Comedical mental health, one million, four hundred and eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. And Mr. Chairman, finally, the road commission, uh, one million, one hundred, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Support, discussion.
Is it that?
Commissioner Ward, roll call. Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item G, the dispatch fee refunds.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to, um, refund the amount of the dispatch fees collected and to be collected prior to the year's end from the townships of Fort Grasset, East China, China, and Port Yarn Township.
Second, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item number H, Fort Grasset Light Station MLAP Grant Application.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt the resolution twelve forty-six, support for the Michigan Lighthouse Assistant Program Grant, and approve the grant application for the light station roof replacement.
I have a second.
Second.
Discussion, I think we had some money on this one, any roll caller?
Sure. Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Two thousand thirteen marine safety grant application.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the two thousand thirteen marine safety program grant application in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Support. Uh, no money on that one, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Two thousand thirteen residential substance abuse treatment agreement with Catholic Social Services.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the residential, uh, substance abuse treatment agreement with Catholic Socia, Social Service in the amount of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for the term of ten-one of two thousand twelve through nine-thirty of two thousand thirteen.
Support, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Goodell's County Park Roof Replacements for two thousand thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I would move to award the con, the contract for the roof replacement of Exhibition Barn and Middle, Exhibit Barn at Goodell's County Park to a reasonable roofing in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Support, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item number L, the Health Advisory Reappoint, Board Reappointments.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to reappoint Barbara Britt's district, Dr. Scott, pronunciation of that.
Philomy.
Philomy, District Three, and John Parsons, District One, to the Health Advisory Board, each for a two-year term, expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and fourteen.
Support, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Did you need a five-minute voice break there, Terry?
I'm good, I'm good.
The Law Enforcement Services Agreement with Algonac.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the, uh, adium A to the City of Algonac Enforcement Service Agreement with the City of Algonac to remove the fuel charge from the agreement.
Support, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, item number N, the Library Network Delivery Service Contract.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the agreement with the Library Network for the inter-library materials delivery service in the amount of forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars for a term of ten-one of two thousand twelve through nine-thirty, two thousand thirteen.
Support, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item number O, the Michigan Mental Health Court Grant Subagreement, the Drug and Alcohol Screening with Blue Water DRP LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the Mental Health Court Grant Subcontract with Blue Water DRP LLC in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for drug alcohol screen services for the term of ten-one of two thousand twelve through nine-thirty of two thousand thirteen.
I would second that motion.
Discussion.
Clarification, this is not to exceed fifteen thousand, is that correct?
That's, that's what it says, yes.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann? Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item number P, Professional Services Contract with Dave French.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the Professional Service Agreement with David French to act as a project advisor for the convention center project in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for a term from, of, uh, seven twelve of two thousand twelve through seven thirty-one of two thousand and fourteen.
Support, discussion.
Howard? Same thing that Howard just mentioned, it's actually it's a contract not to exceed, is what I'm saying.
Not to exceed, oh, okay, I ju, just want to make sure, because I, if, you know, he only does twenty thousand dollars worth, I don't want to have to pay him thirty.
Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairperson Bohm?
Yes.
Item Q, the purchase of the Dynamic Imaging Software System.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the purchase of the Dynamic Imaging Software Program for the Intervention Center in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty cents.
Support, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item R, the Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Program Grant Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the twenty-thirteen Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant Agreement in the amount of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Item S, the Resolution eleven forty-six Senior Mileage Funds for the two thousand thirteen appropriation.
Uh, just before, I'm going to make that motion, but I, I just want to make sure that you understand, it's twelve forty-eight instead of twelve forty-six is printed in your agenda. So I would move to adopt Resolution twelve forty-eight, appropriation for senior citizen mileage funds for the calendar year as two thousand thirteen, as presented.
Support, discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
On Resolution twelve thirty-four, relative to perdiems for boards and commissions.
Mr. Chairman, I would move, uh, to adopt the Resolution twelve thirty-four, relative to perdiem for the Board of Commissions in the amount of thirty dollars per day plus mileage allowance as authorized.
I would support that motion.
Discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Chairman Bohm?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, there's, if, if administrator comptroller could check in to see if a solid waste permit people are included in that perdiem, if you would do that, just email me.
Okay, uh, item U, Resolution twelve thirty-five.
Mr. Chairman, I would move, uh, to Resolution twelve thirty-five, waiving interest accused on taxes collected by local units.
Support, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Um, and D, Resolution twelve thirty-six, establishing salaries of specific county elected and non-elected officers for two thousand thirteen.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twelve dash thirty-six, establishing salaries of specific county elected and non-elected officers for two thousand and thirteen.
Support, discussion, roll call. Actually, weren't we going to cut the clerks' pay?
I think they already did.
Okay, I think they already did.
Okay, just checking.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Item number W, 1237, Approving Annual Wage Adjustments for the County Association of Non-Union Employees.
I'd make a motion for the adoption of Resolution 12-37, Approving Annual Wage Adjustments for County Association of Non-Union Employees.
Support.
Discussion. Let's do a roll call on that.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Item number X, the 1238 County-at-Large Drain Assessments.
I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of Resolution 12-38 relative to the annual county-at-large drain assessments in the amount of five-hundred-and-eleven thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Item Y, Resolution 1239, Establishing Compensation to be Paid to Members of the St. Clair County Road Commission.
Make a motion for the adoption of Resolution 12-39, Establishing Compensation to be Paid to Members of the St. Clair County Road Commission.
Support.
Discussion.
At our committee meeting, we asked for a little history on this.
I've made a note to myself. Was that sent out to you?
I think I got it. I'm not sure.
Did you?
I thought so.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't have it here in front of me.
Do you remember what some of the?
The question was, who sets the wages and how were they set for the road commission members? I actually see one of the road commission members in the audience who looks like he has something he wants to say. No?
Just tell me what you remember, what you sent out. Do you have it with you? They got a lot of emails. I don't know if I got it or not, but I know there's a history of why the perdiems are different from road commission versus other.
Yes, and rather than try and throw something out that's inaccurate, I will get it back to you.
Vote no on it. Roll call.
The solid waste wouldn't fall on this, too, would it?
That's the thirty dollars.
Well, the reason I brought that up about solid waste permit is, we meet so rarely, but when we do, we have really very important matters to discuss, and we have a hard time keeping a full membership there. And, you know, if thirty dollars in gas mileage gets some of those people in from the outlying areas, you know, I think we need to compensate them. Just, I know, we only meet maybe once every five or six years, and then when we do, we meet two or three times in a row.
More discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Resolution 12-40, Establishing Compensation for the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners.
Move for the adoption of Resolution 12-40, Establishing Compensation for the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. And just for the record, on these compensation things, they're all the same as they were last year. There are no increases in that, so I just wanted to put that out there.
And the year before.
And the year before. Resolution 12-41, Establishing Compensation to be Paid to Members of the Department of the Human Services Board.
Make a motion for the adoption of Resolution 12-41, Establishing Compensation to be Paid to Members of the Department of Human Services Board.
Second.
Same thing. You sent that out. This was another one that we talked about.
These are set by the state.
No, they're appointed by the state. I didn't realize they were set by the state. Because I'm told by members of this board that other counties exceed near this amount.
Size of the county, perhaps, you think?
Could be based on population.
Population base.
Or service area.
Okay.
More discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Item A B, Resolution 1242, Adopting the 2013 Special Revenue Fund Budgets, Amending the 2012 General and Special Revenue Funds Budgets.
Make a motion for the adoption of Resolution 12-42, Adopting 2013 Special Revenue Funds Budgets, Amending the 2012 General and Special Revenue Funds Budgets.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner London?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasko?
Yes.
Commissioner Greatop?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes. Survey and Remonument, AC, Survey and Remonumentation 2013 Grant Application.
Make a motion to approve the 2013 Survey and Remonumentation Grant Application, the amount of seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars.
No money match on there. Do I have a second?
Second.
Question. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. A D, the Veteran Affairs Request for Addition to the Manning Table, Part-Time Clerk Typist One.
Make a motion to approve the request from Veterans Affairs to add one additional part-time clerk typist one to their manning table.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. The A E, the Aeronautics Advisory Board Reappointment.
Make a motion to reappoint William McKelvey, Member-at-Large, the Aeronautics Advisory Board for a three-year term, expiring nine-thirty, 2015.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. A F.
Make a motion to reappoint Terry Gill, Local Government, to the Agricultural Preservation Board for a four-year term, expiring twelve-thirty-one, sixteen.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. A G.
Make a motion to reappoint Vern Bartley, Jr., to the Area Agency on Aging, 1B, as an older adult representative, for a term expiring twelve-thirty-one, 2014.
Second.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
A H.
Make a motion to reappoint Ken Forster, District One, to the Road Commission DPW, for a six-year term, expiring twelve-thirty-one, 2018.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
A I.
Make a motion to reappoint John Cooper, District Two, John Osborne, District One, to Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, each for a three-year term, expiring twelve-thirty-one, 2015.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. A J.
Make a motion to reappoint William Dieter, Township Supervisor, Representative Jeff Friedland, County Emergency Management, Chief Michael Reeves, Criminal Justice Association, and Mike Wendling, Criminal Justice Association, to Central Dispatch Advisory Board, each for a four-year term, expiring two thousand, twelve-thirty-one, 2016.
Support.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
A K.
Like to make a motion to reappoint Pamela Wall, Member-at-Large, I think it's supposed to be, is it Crystal Jones? I thought it was Christie, District Two, to the Commission on Aging, each for the three-year term, expiring twelve-thirty-one, 2015.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
A L.
Make a motion to reappoint Dan Esterlein, Member-at-Large, Sergeant Joe Hernandez, County Sheriff Designee, and Sergeant Todd LeVey, Michigan State Police, to the Concealed Weapons Licensing Board, each for a four-year term, expiring twelve-thirty-one, 2016.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. A M.
Make a motion to approve the Health Department Request for the Exemption to the Hiring Freeze for Two Clerk Typists, Two Positions, and waive the six-month waiting period.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
A N was polled, A O, the Metropolitan Planning Commission Reappointments.
Make a motion to reappoint Stephen Cooper, Recreational Tourism, Dorothea DeBoyer, Local Government, to the Metropolitan Planning Commission, each for a three-year term, expiring twelve-thirty-one, 2015.
We do have one more appointment, the number three.
I would second as are the first two nominations and then?
And we're going to do a vote on that, I guess?
Third one needs a vote.
Do you want to vote on?
Okay.
Vote on the first portion?
First portion, yeah, we'll vote on the first portion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
If I could, the Metro Planning Commission, Bill and I had talked about this, Don Sheldon was seeking that, and he's going to withdraw from Parks and Rec, and I don't know what Bill Foster was going to do.
I will withdraw Bill Foster's name from Metropolitan Planning at this time. I nominate him, I'll withdraw him.
So then I would move to put Don Sheldon?
Yeah, motion to appoint Don Sheldon.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did they want these ballots marked? Is that the idea, or?
Well, that particular one, you don't have to now, because you have a withdrawal, so you're not doing a vote, you're doing a? So Jay, we're all set with the bottom piece of this motion, because? Correct. Okay.
You all caught up?
Yeah, right.
Okay. Parks and Rec Commission Appointments, A P.
Make a motion to appoint Terry Wallace, District Six and Seven, to the Parks and Recreation Commission, for a three-year term, expiring twelve-thirty-one, 2015.
Support.
And then we have two other names on it, but we'll do the first piece of it. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, as far as the other piece?
We have the withdrawal of one.
Don Sheldon would be withdrawn.
Okay. We have, I guess, two nominations on there.
Vote on the remaining two. Do you want to mark the ballot on this one, Jay? Is that the idea?
Yeah. I need a motion to close the nominations. I'd make a motion to close nominations for the Park and Rec Commission, at-large, position expiring twelve-thirty-one, 2015, and to cast ballots for said positions.
Two names, yeah.
Support.
So, all in favor to close?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we're going to do the ballot thing. I'll have the clerk have you lead them. All right, William Foster. So I need to, do we have to, we don't have to do any auctions or anything?
Does that elect it? Does that take care of it?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. A Q, Solid Waste.
Make a motion to reappoint Robin Berry, Solid Waste Management Industry, Charles Daly, Environmental Interest, Patricia Isler, Township Government, Christine Loffler, Industrial Waste Generator, Sarah Nelson, Environmental Interest, and Bill Parkus.
Second.
Discussion.